Hey, we're about to call the order officially, but how about that? At 12:30. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
All right, Secretary Hoverson.
Here.
Thank you, Member Holmes.
Here.
Thank you, and Chairman Lewis.
Here.
Vice Chairman Martell is absent. I don't think it's online.
I wouldn't be sure. I know we extended it to her.
She mentioned trying, but...
She's just being nice.
Yeah, I don't see her anywhere. So Vice Chairman Martell is absent. Member Segal?
I am here.
Super.
We have a forum.
We do. Great. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda as proposed by staff or board members?
Nothing on my end.
None? Okay. Well, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. Holmes, thank you. Segal Holmes. Holmes, a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Wow. Glad the executive director is stepping up for responsibility.
I just got off a charter state board meeting yesterday. Hi, hi, wait, hi.
I was at a board meeting all day, too.
Sorry.
I'll be at council meetings sometimes. I start to...
I have never made that mistake.
I didn't do it, but I felt it coming.
It doesn't have an "I". It's just an "A" in here, okay. Again, this is the time and place reserved for anyone to speak on items not on the agenda, because this is a general meeting of the governing board, not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak here in the room?
I would like to do some introductions, but let's check for the other sites.
Yeah, let's see that first. Anybody else, other sites or online?
I would like to do some introductions, but let's check for the other sites.
Yeah, let's see that first. Anybody else, other sites or online? Liz, no?
I don't think so. There's nothing in the board email and nothing in the chat. I don't see anyone raising hands.
Then we'll close public comment. Ms. Gaskell, good time for your introductions.
Just real quickly, I think all of you in the room have met Carol Castro Ballard, our Director of Special Education, who is not officially starting full-time until July 1, but I just thought it was an opportunity for her to get to know everybody. She's diving in a little bit, so welcome and thank you for being here. I told her she can skedaddle whenever she wants to, to give up her Saturday with us. She doesn't have to do that, so... But thank you. We're really excited for you to start.
We'll do our best.
Thanks, Al. And Rachel Angeles came up from the Riverside campus. As you know, Rachel was Executive Assistant and COVID Coordinator, and then she was Executive Assistant and Teacher this year, half and a half, in Corona. But she came up because she was helping me on the project for the staff room remodel.
Finally.
Here in North Bay. And so she came up yesterday to help me kind of organize that.
Is it done?
No, no.
Oh, I was gonna say, you're kidding. It was just two months ago.
We've had some resistance about giving feedback over the way, along the way, which then leads me to wonderful Sarah Torma. Sarah is here visiting. She is an educational coordinator and our elementary school site-based teacher as well. And she has been one of the only ones who has, at first, been giving us great input on reading of the staff room. She did a lovely job in her own classroom, so... But now we had a lot of people giving some wonderful feedback yesterday, so... But thank you, Sarah, for joining us. I'm glad you could be here, so... And you know Brittany and Corinne already. If I have to introduce them, then, you know, you're too old to be on board.
Old friends.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Yeah, Jim, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything publicly about OJ stepping down.
Oh, we not reported on that?
We sent out an email to families, so...
Thank you. No, no, no.
Now, Liz just reminded me, we talked about it.
So OJ decided to retire. He's working through some health things, and we hope that will all work out. I think just in lieu of his commitments and ability, he decided to retire from the board. I'm trusting we will send him a nice gift, as is our custom. And one of us can present that to him, or I'll make a point if I have to do that, you know, somebody should present that to him and see him and share and have lunch with him or something.
As usual, yes.
That would be very nice. So, yeah, well, Miss OJ, he served with us for nine years-ish, somewhere? Long time.
I have no idea.
Oh, you've been on longer than you think.
Five or six.
No.
You're about nine.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Seventeen?
You've been around a long time.
Yeah. 2017.
Yeah.
Yes. Not seventeen years.
Yeah, that's about right.
Twenty-two years, twenty-seven, yeah.
Seven and a half years.
Long time.
Yes, you're right, Liz.
It's like the Hotel California. You can't check out them to the charge. Well, OJ did. OJ did, but, uh, yeah. Poor comparison, I understand. We don't have that in our school, hopefully. Wow, we're up to the start. Carol, you should be a part of this. I'm already screwing up. It's usually Tom, all right.
I give blame, but it's true.
Pretty much.
Ralph?
Well, OJ, thank you for your service, yes. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Very kind. Nice one. Cher?
Jennifer?
Cher was actually the better member. I love you, Cher.
Yes, she was very kind. Okay, well, I'm glad that we'll be able to honor him at a point, um, to do that.
We will. We have it.
And then we'll move on then to our update from the San Diego team. Are they online?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, it's...
Hey, Gail, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Terrific. Let's go. I'm great. We're gonna see you, or we're just gonna hear you? Okay, we're just gonna hear you.
Um, I'm here on... My video's on, but we'll also watch the slides. Thank you, Liz, for putting that up.
Gail, I wanted to ask you, do you have anything that you need to share from your computer or like a video, or is it all just in the PDF?
It's all in that PDF that I shared with Jana.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so our biggest news this year, this is our update for the 2024-2025 school year, and our biggest highlight was our charter renewal being approved earlier this year. I believe it was December 19th. So we're really grateful about the support that we received from students, parents, staff, and alumni. Thank you, everyone on this meeting right now that actually flew down to, or drove down to come support us. We received... I know there's only a small group at the actual determination, but there, we received a lot of positive feedback, and they were really grateful and shared their appreciation to the school for serving the students. I believe the quote was, "Thank you for serving the students that were unable to serve." So that one made me tear, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. Yeah, the district board, yeah.
They totally understand what I do.
Yeah.
Yeah. In other news, we've been trying to wrap up some of our community events. Big shout out to Anna Martinez, who's helping us coordinate some of these events. The goal of these, becoming involved in the community, but also to help promote Pivot Charter School. I'd like to share what Jana keeps telling us about. One of the things she heard from one of our grandparents, actually, at the graduation a year or two ago was that Pivot is San Diego's best-kept secret. And she was not very happy about that, so we're trying to do something about it and make sure that we're no longer a big secret. So we're trying to get out there in the community. We've attended the Harvest Festival in the Spring Fling, and in the next few weeks, we'll be attending, a few of our teachers will be attending the Escondido Street Festival and the Vista Strawberry Festival. So again, thank you to Anna for helping us set those up. I wanted to share this. I'm not sure if you guys have all seen it. Do we have time to share this?
Yes, it was great.
Okay, yeah. Do you mind playing this?
Okay.
Did you guys see this?
No.
Remember, we asked, hold on, so we asked about alternative advertising in San Diego. We talked about a commercial of some sort, so we sponsored a news segment.
Oh.
And as part of that, like, no, sports brought to you by Pivot Charter School, then we got this little infomercial on the news. It was great. Now, let's see it.
Is the audio on there? It's not on the Google.
It's working here.
Okay, as long as you guys can hear it.
Yep, keep going.
It won't be on the screen.
That's cool.
It wasn't scripted.
That was irresponsible. We talked about it in February, though. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it wasn't scripted at all, which, for me, you know, I'm the blab. But for her, it was not scripted. She did such an amazing job. She had a lot of help from, you know, her teachers and Gail, but it wasn't...
How'd you pick her, Gail? That student? She was great.
Yeah, she's one of my students in my caseload, and she's just been amazing. And she's the one that always, like, tries to tell her friends from her old school to come to Pivot. I think she's brought at least three or four already over to Pivot, so I thought she'd be like the best bookworm, so... And she's actually grad... Oh, she shared it, but she said, you know, she's graduating a year early, and she came in, you know, not in the greatest place, but she was one of our greatest success stories.
Is she going to Palomar or San Marcos?
She's actually going to Cal State San Marcos.
Good for her.
Yeah.
Super.
Excited. So, yeah, so one of the goals for, you know, trying to get the word out about Pivot is, you know, obviously bringing up our enrollment. So this year, we finally met the target enrollment, but that was, you know, later in the game, so it still didn't fulfill what we had originally targeted. But we did get there, and thanks to Riverside. And I believe that was Liz's idea, to bring up some people that are on their waitlist. And we have the updates for our re-enrollment for next year, and we're continuing to work on getting more of our current students re-enrolled as well as getting new students. Next slide. So another big initiative for ours the last couple of years is just building school culture, and we've made some great progress in that as well. You know, we've, you know, done celebrations. This is, you know, we've got a lot more students coming in regularly this year than we did last year. We had a hard time, you know, getting people back after COVID. And this year, I feel like we're finally starting to get the flow of students coming in on a regular basis. Next slide. Oh, and bottom left, we added a few people to our school. We've got a couple of Pivot San Diego babies that was celebrating it outside of class, class time. Just want to share that. Another thing we've done a lot of this year is field trips. We've really increased them this year. It's the most field trips we've had in one year. This is just a list of what we've done so far. We may add one or two more. So, yeah, so we've had a lot of, you know, kind of repeats from before that students love, such as college tours. We've got, you know, San Diego Zoo and the Safari Park. We had actually one of the students and parents let us know that they have a good friend working for the Safari Park, and we got a nice behind-the-scenes tour of the elephants and, you know, what they do to take care of them. So that was really nice. That was a nice addition. Next slide is, one more slide of field trips. I wanted to highlight some of the new ones we added, the repertoire. We added SeaWorld, which the students love. We had a lot of students come that don't normally come to campus. We had the California Surf Museum. If you guys see, if you notice the surfboard, that's the actual surfboard that Bethany Hamilton had that got bitten by a shark. So that's located in that museum. And then, yeah, and then we have a couple more coming up. We've never gone to the Botanic Garden and then the Toy Pines hike. And then we did a poly-science camp with Riverside, which, next slide, please. Wanted to highlight that one. Thank you to Mackenzie for all her help in planning that, while she planned the whole thing, and we kind of just tagged along. So the students that came back and the teachers really enjoyed it. It was not easy to plan, you know, because of the weather. We had to postpone it by a few days, but it all worked out. So thank you, Mackenzie, for that, and thank you for including San Diego. Next slide. We also had another wellness fair. We had it last year, and we continue to do that this year. We had the community organizations, such as the ones with the pet therapy. But we also had some new people help us out. This is actually a parent of one of our students that does these sound baths. So she brought in a bunch of her bulls, and it was just really nice and relaxing. And, you know, we did some yoga meditation and did some mindful coloring and kind of gave students some tools that they could do to manage, you know, their emotions and just to kind of maintain their overall wellness. Next slide. And then just on our day-to-day, where we, you know, continue to work on improving the onsite program. Some of our highlights this year is that we've really gotten, like, all of the REC's that we have a structured approach now to opening and closing our onsite program. So we have our intentional opening, so we kind of do something fun like that, like, "Which Kermit are you today?" or "Which, you know, sloth are you today?" So the students are kind of, they have that routine. They know to check in with us, so we know what they're coming in with. And then, you know, during the, we have the onsite classes, but in addition to that, we've kind of better organized our study hall. So we're trying to do more small groups, so it's focused on, you know, so there's a teacher working on math assignments, a teacher working on science, writing assignment, et cetera. So that's been working out well as well. And then we always close now with a community circle, sorry. So this is kind of a tool that we learned from one of our professional development on restorative practices and building school culture. So that has worked out really well. We implemented it mid-year, and the students love it because it's just, it's just nice to have a closure that students can expect before they kind of run out and get picked up, so not everybody's just getting picked up at different times. It's a nice closure. So just some fun pictures from the elementary program as well as the middle and high school program on the next slide. Again, some, yeah, so that's some of our heaviest days. We had a couple of days, a few days when we had a full house, so it was nice to see that again. We haven't seen it since pre-COVID.
Wow, that's...
Yeah. And then just a quick mid-year dashboard review. Just wanted to share some data analysis that, thank you to Abigail for sharing these. Wanted to share it with everyone as well. We're kind of on track for having some great improvement in many of these areas. So chronic absenteeism, we're on track for our goal of 3% improvement, going from red to yellow. And suspension rate, we're also on track to remain in the blue category, very low category. English language learner progress, our Alex, who's in charge of our testing, that's been, I believe, all, most all students, pretty much everybody we can. And we're looking forward to seeing the results in mid-May to see how many students have improved and who might be eligible for reclassification.
Nice job, San Diego, on that, the graduation rates and the chronic absenteeism. That's awesome.
They're big.
Yeah, thanks for focusing on that.
More good news in graduation rate, hopefully. We're on track to be between 79 and 83%. Either one would show growth from last year and could place us, potentially place us in green if we're at the 83%. And then college and career preparedness, we're on track to have six out of our 21 seniors prepared, which would put us in yellow. And then last week, or this past week, was our testing week. We had strong participation. I believe we improved from last year's participation this time of the year, and we are continuing to test. Makeup week is next week officially, but we're going to continue to test until the last day of school to get as much students as we can tested, and we're hoping to see improvements there as well.
And just for the board's knowledge, Abigail and her team, they create, they look, they're analyzing the data, and then they, she meets with each one of the site administrators to come up with what's their plan for tacking each one of the dashboard items. If I can be there, I am. If not, they just rock and roll with it, come up with a plan, and it's been really successful. Thank you, Gail.
So thanks again. So that's it. We have some new faces on our staff, some amazing professionals who, I forgot to mention earlier, they're the reason why we have so many field trips this year, because they're able to help plan those a lot. So I wanted to thank you for allowing us to have the pair of professionals as well, in addition to amazing ECs and ESs and other staff. That's it. Thank you.
Wow, great.
Thank you, Gail.
Good work. Board members, any questions?
There's a lot going on.
Good stuff going on.
They do have a lot going on, for sure.
Well, thank you. That was encouraging and great, great progress, Gail. Thank you so much. Gail, Liz, are you gonna keep the encouragement up with our financial update?
Yeah, we're looking...
Pretty good.
We're looking all right right now. I have to go. I was gonna say, I remember confetti on this one.
No, I'm the confetti queen.
Okay, so, I'm not sure. We're back down to two fiscal years now. Last meeting, we were spending three fiscal years, the final report on the last year's audit, but now we're just focusing on the current year, forecast update, and budgeting for the coming fiscal year. So first up, this year's forecast, and we do now have our official P2 ADA, but we didn't have the time to make it onto the slide, unfortunately, but we're actually very, very close to what we had forecasted in here. So it was a good job of tracking the attendance over the year and adjusting the forecast accordingly. So you can see, for this current forecast, there was no change from the prior report that we made to you all. So North Bay came in at like 355.9, so it was only 0.1 ADA off of what our forecast was, which is great. San Diego and North Valley were both a little bit higher. San Diego was like 92. I can look them up if you want to know the exact numbers, but we're very close. And Riverside is actually about 155, up by about 3 ADA. So overall, a great, great year for our final P2 numbers, very close to our forecast. However, if you remember, we don't have it on this list, and we did drop it from the original budget at the beginning of the year, and that was largely due to some staffing difficulties, having unfilled positions, and lots of leaves this year for various reasons. Happy ones like maternity leave and having babies, but, you know, all kinds of things
Six things.
that have, yeah, made it a little bit difficult to keep the staffing to maintain the enrollment numbers.
That's the age of people we hire.
I thought when you said leave, you meant a thing of trees, so it was like...
Personnel leaves.
Personnel.
Yes, exactly. So actuals for North Bay over the course of the year, this is kind of our typical attendance rate, where, you know, we kind of have that strong attendance at the start of the year, tends to dip a little bit around the end of the year, around the holidays and the semester turnover. It tends to bounce back. But ADA, average daily attendance at North Bay, has been fairly consistent all year, despite some fluctuations in the actual enrollment and attendance rates. Similar at North Valley, the ADA has gone up and down a little bit, but very strong in the middle especially. We kind of had the surge in enrollment in the fall, which was nice. And we had a little bit of a dip in the spring, but that kind of strong enrollment surge in the fall really helped to take her back. San Diego, pretty much steady enrollment over the course of the year. And as Gail mentioned, we did have some students who had been on a waitlist at Pivot Riverside, where we didn't have the, you know, sort of staffing and principal capacity to grow at the time, and some of them opted to enroll instead in Pivot San Diego because San Diego is allowed to serve students in almost all of the same counties. I think in the end, it was more like 10 to 15.
Quite a few.
Yeah. By the time we stopped ending enrollment, because you'll see here in month seven, the enrollment went up to 123.
That's them.
And not all of those were from that sort of option that we provided, but ADA was about 10 to 15.
I mean, so if you think about it, and I've talked to some of you about this individually, we have a school, and the parents want to go to Pivot, because what Pivot offers, all four of our schools offer the same thing, more or less, with little tweaks locally. And they're sitting there on a waitlist, and we can serve them at a Pivot San Diego, so we gave them an option, you know, and they knew what they were doing. They all would rather...
They stay virtual, then?
No, they can actually go to the Riverside campus, and that's created some, you know, some challenges that we didn't think about in advance. But, yeah, I mean, if they live in Riverside, Pivot San Diego, if you remember, Riverside went under Pivot San Diego back before RCOE authorized us. So, and we just gave them an option. If you would like to be enrolled in a Pivot and do the Pivot program, we still have room at Pivot San Diego. We can legally serve you. And if you would like to attend site-based offerings, then Pivot, you can go to the Pivot Riverside campus. So the families were thrilled. Now, we also have given them the option to re-enroll back in Pivot Riverside. They get priority re-enroll, so...
So for Riverside's enrollment, we did have very strong enrollment right from the start of the year, and we hit our cap there very early, which is why we had that waitlist. And so you can see, you know, 184, that was over what we had projected for our cap. Sometimes it's a little hard when you do the lotteries and things like that, and you offer spots. You're not sure how many will actually accept and enroll, because they may have been waiting for a while. So we actually went over what we had planned for a little bit, and then kind of tapered back down to what our max size had been in the recent months. But overall, very strong enrollment and attendance at Riverside this year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the budget for next year, kind of what the plans are there. So just aggregate forecast pivot-wide, you see the largest kind of savings here on the forecast is personnel, and that is due to vacant positions getting updated in the forecast, staff leaves, the actual dates getting finalized. Sometimes when a staff member goes out on a leave, we're not sure how long it's going to be. So we often, you know, kind of budget conservatively on that and assume it's going to be shorter, but sometimes they end up being longer, or someone might end up not coming back. So we did finally get almost all of the details of the leaves ironed out and built into the forecast for the year, which is why you see a large savings there. I think we had five or six leaves and maybe three or four resignations over the course of the year that didn't, those positions didn't get filled for a while. So it's been a difficult year for staffing in general. We also had, we weren't sure, we're never sure what interest rates are going to do over the course of the year, so we don't budget for having, you know, really high interest coming in. But after we're getting, you know, kind of close to the end of the school year here, we adjusted that based on our actuals, so we actually had a very big year for interest. And then the rest of the adjustments, just very small. But overall, a date to the operating income is about $200,000.
Three months out, baby.
Yeah.
Get ready.
By sites. Every site is now positive. No funding determinations are due for next year, but we do still, you know, obviously look at all the requirements that we need to meet for the amount of instructional spending and things like that. And we are looking good at the moment. So all sites looking good for the current forecast by the end of the year. Cash balance, again, has been strong, and...
I like it.
Not much to say.
I like it.
It's very nice.
The way we like it.
Boring in that...
It's nice to not have to do an anticipated note.
Boring, that's right.
Any questions about current year forecast before we move on to budgets?
Much better. That's great. I think it looks like some of the areas, we had some question of rectified themselves for now, so that's good.
Okay, so we are, this is kind of later than we have met historically in the spring, so we're pretty close to the May revise now, and we've been hearing lots of, you know, things coming out of... And we've been hearing lots of, you know, things coming out of various state agencies. But we are still operating at the current assumptions from the governor's January budget until the May revise comes out. But one thing that we have been hearing is that there will likely be an increase. Not sure how much, it might be quite small, but to the LCFS plan to increase for next year. Things, you know, with like capital gains taxes and things, you know, the state has been having revenue receipts that were higher than anticipated, so.
Or is line.
Next year, no, next year is going to be brutal.
Might be.
So we should not grow anything. This is where school districts get in trouble. You get like a 5% COLA or something, oh! And then the next year's negative 3, you know, it's like.
Yeah, yeah. So we're currently operating at a 2.43% LCFS increase. You know, it may go up a little bit, but that's for, you know, short term. And the forecast, as you mentioned, Chairman Lewis, for the long term, they're definitely bracing for, for things to kind of hit eventually.
I'll give you my comments on Sacramento during your presentation when you, there's some weird things going on that I haven't seen before, so.
And some of the things.
I don't, I don't think they'll be bad for us, but go ahead.
About the revenue increases, for example, you know, a lot of the state's income, you know, comes from like people who are very well off and, you know, maybe selling off their stocks and things like that and having capital gains taxes within, you know, the state. So with all those.
Not a whole lot of that going on right now.
Volatility and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, next year's going to be.
Yeah, so it's been, you know, higher receipts than anticipated for the last couple of months, but it's definitely a bit of a volatile environment.
Paying now from last year. Last year was a great, a good year. Right, it was a great year, actually. So where they were still paying, you know, if you underestimated your, you know, your, what you gave and quarterly, you're paying more now to pick up for it. So that's why they're going to have more money for a while because of that. But this current year, obviously.
Yeah, and there are, you know, obviously obligations to put money into the, you know, quote unquote rainy day fund and things like that that, you know, might mean that any increases don't necessarily go directly into, you know, school budgets, but.
The governor's declaring a modest surplus in his budget when he's using more of them from the rainy day fund than the surplus is. That's actually kind of interesting that he's put a budget together with this $300 million surplus when it really is borrowing, is taking like $7 billion out of the rainy day fund. So how's that work, Ralph? Can you explain that to me? I was pretty entertained by that. I can't do that at City Hall, I don't know.
But I will also just kind of highlight as well the fires in the Los Angeles area.
Pardon me?
The fires in the Los Angeles area, I believe they issued another kind of extension for filing taxes as well. So that previously, that type of situation had caused some issues because if taxes aren't actually due for, for some, you know, residents until the fall, after the budget is already, you know, well underway, you know, it's, it's harder to, to, you know, hit a moving target or when you don't have all the information and reports and receipts, so. So that also is something that's been coming up, you know, as sort of uncertainty, there's going to be a large group of people who don't actually file their taxes until the fall tax may adjust, but it looks like who wants to get that information. Other budget things, we are actually currently in the budget forecasting some enrollment growth. That's largely because we are not anticipating as many personnel and staffing difficulties next year, hopefully.
Pretty guaranteed.
So it's kind of.
Get them all lined up right to go, right?
So yeah, so we're growing kind of back up to what we had anticipated originally for this year and also based on the waitlists that we have had at North Bay and Riverside to make sure that we are staffing accordingly to meet those demands in the schools that are a little bit larger. Other things that are of note in North Bay, we have a CSI grant. CSI stands for comprehensive support and improvement. And that is for the graduation rate. It's a federal grant.
That's interesting, you cover that.
Yeah, I'll cover that.
Of money.
We haven't gotten that before, right? I didn't recognize that. I did not recognize that.
We have been flagged for the status, but we have not taken the grant previously. But it's, it's, at this point, it's a dollar amount that we can't say no to.
Right.
Like, why, why would you, you know?
Right.
It's $411,000 for North Bay. So we have started planning for that. There is, you know, obviously a whole separate budget developing for that one grant because it is a significant amount of money. About what positions are we going to add to address that. But the purpose of the grant is to provide targeted support and improvement for North Bay's graduation rate. So we've been looking at a lot of data regarding students in high school, especially 11th and 12th graders who might not be on track to graduate. You know, what are some evidence-based strategies that work for getting those students to engage and kind of make it to the finish line and kind of, you know, mitigate some of those issues that are barriers to them actually completing their high school. So that will be.
Just track grants, we spend it over a number of years. We were, is it received over a number of years as well?
So it is, technically spans three fiscal years, but it's only a portion of this year just in the spring and it's a small portion of the, the final fiscal year. But it is something that they measure every year and the funds do renew and continue, so we will get more money in future years as long as the program stays the way it currently is.
Right.
At the federal level.
The federal thing is interesting. And a lot of these things like this, I suppose, are maybe in jeopardy, I would suppose. So I guess we just don't know what's going on, so.
I don't think the funds are in jeopardy because if you want to see even more pulling tank. But I think the, how it's allocated is in jeopardy and it's not, it's going to be a mess if they keep.
The DOE like is gone, right?
So there, it, who's allocating it and how is it, nobody's there to allocate it. That's the issue. It's not really so much the funding because Congress has already, has already approved the funding. The funding is there, but it's, it's not.
That's what we were told.
There's no one left to allocate it.
By our National League of Cities person was that, you know, they may or may not be able to cut funds because Congress has the purse strings, but there's no staff there.
There's no staff to do.
Take your calls.
So it's not so much the money, but it's, yeah, it might be delayed, it might, who the heck knows? That's where the question.
I guess the theory would be get the money and then we'll spend it, opposed to we're going to get the money and we're going to spend it later now.
So this year's money is.
You're going to have to retro, you know, retroactively, you know, as opposed to a lot of this stuff, but the federal stuff's got to be like, maybe be like that. And you may think you get it in Jan, you get it in July and you may, it maybe comes in January if you're lucky. So who the heck knows?
And several of these types of grants will have, you know, preliminary allocation of 50% or 30% or something like that to kind of get started. And then the remainder is on a reimbursement basis. So you submit your expenditure reports and then they give you the money to reimburse you for what you have spent. So yeah, we'll, we'll see how that one goes, but we're currently developing that sort of sub-budget for the grant because it is a significant enough amount of money that we have to add specific positions targeted for those purposes. And it does have a supplement not supplant requirement, which means we can't just take existing programs, you know, and, and, you know, move them over. It has to be, you know, new efforts and more adding new positions and stuff like that, so. Let's see.
Is that $400,000 plus amount, Steve, is just for next year, starting in the spring of this year? That's one year's.
That's only one year.
One year.
I wanted to make sure, yeah, I thought that's what your question was, so.
Well, it does, technically, there is some this, depending on planning, and there are some that there's a little.
So the basis for the question is whenever you get a grant like this, that's, has a finite term or you're, we're not certain where, when it's ever going to end, start something really cool and the funds go away.
That's, that's why we haven't taken it before.
Either plan to keep doing it or cut it.
Yeah, and that's why we haven't taken it before, but we just couldn't resist this year, especially because there's lots of cool things we can be doing.
Well, we can use this for like R and D on contract services to help kids graduate. That's the point of it, right? To increase our graduation rate.
Yes.
So to your point, I think that's right.
Yes.
There's some, we can try a few new things, try a few new third-party things maybe, and then, hey, we help kids graduate, great. We invested, we don't know.
Yeah, and what we're seeing, you know, in terms of the evidence-based strategies is really, it's focused on this like intensive individual support where, you know, every student has their own situation, their own hurdles that are making it difficult for them to engage or to succeed if they are engaging. And so, you know, just kind of adding some additional support people who can work really closely. You know, we currently are.
We'll get into some of the detailed ideas that we have in my presentation, yeah.
Yeah.
To your point, is this money that once you're in it, you're in it until your situation changes or is it a three-year deal?
Yeah, so they, they are, they're three-year cycles. We're currently in the last year of the three-year cycle. And the funds are allocated on an ongoing basis. They look at your graduation rate every year. But the graduation rate that they look at is a three-year rolling average, and if you're 68% or below, you qualify.
Got it.
We're currently in like the 40 to 50 something percent, so we have a long ways to go.
And we probably will always be kind of in there because of our population that we attract.
Yes, but the goal is, you know, if this grant, if it is, you know, on an ongoing basis can support us in getting closer to that 68%, maybe someday we, we wouldn't qualify for the grant anymore, but at this point, you know.
But hopefully by then we'll have learned a ton as to what we can do to serve these kids, you know?
Yes.
And just start doing things differently across the board pivot-wide. So it's an opportunity to learn, like you said, R and D, Jim.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice not to qualify for this grant.
It would be.
Yes, yes.
That's the goal.
But in the meantime, the R and D will be helpful.
And we may see other schools qualify on a smaller scale and a smaller, smaller budget, but it's, you have to have a significant size of graduating class so they kind of, you know, it's for it to be statistically significant for them to say. I mean, our other three schools have been kind of on the too small to qualify end numbers. So we'll see, it's possible Riverside, depending on what their graduation rate does. If it is low enough to qualify as their school grows and has enough data. Would it potentially be, you know, there are second-class students, so they might be qualified if their graduation rate meets the criteria. Okay, so over the next few years, we talked a lot about the one-time funds with multi-year spending timelines being phased out and we are almost there. So you can see it does correlate really linearly with the operating income. It's just going down a little bit every year so that we're breakeven by the last year of this multi-year projection. But we have been managing, you know, staffing levels and expenses so that we are still breakeven by the end of this, by the 27, 28 year at least, which is how far out we're projecting our year. A couple of things to highlight.
I'm sorry, are we going to, I was waiting for Tom to usually ask this question because it's always a good question. On our fund balance and the size of it, how much of that is cash?
It was all, yeah, like how much of that is, you know?
Is that numbers?
Yeah.
How much of that is, okay.
Undesignated.
It varies.
Couple of million probably now, right? Two million, million and a half?
Million and a half, probably.
Million and a half, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Well, it's just good to have it on our back, you know?
But that really means we're more like 15% if you look at it that way, right? Not 44.
Yeah, because what an ending fund balance is as opposed to.
Yeah, cash.
Yes, and you know, as, as we were discussing with the uncertainty of things in the future, you know, we currently are projecting, you know, slightly decreasing operating incomes, but still breakeven. But depending on what happens, you know, we could have a couple of rough years where those differ negatively. So it's nice to have that cash on hand so that we don't end up having to be in that really tight spot of, you know, not being able to pay the bills.
So we can pivot.
Ah, there you go.
I'm very.
What did he say, Joe?
Nothing.
Nothing worth noticing. Monthly financial summary.
But it is a.
No love at all.
I'm proud that we are where we are, especially facing the storm we are about to face.
On what we've been through.
As California public schools and what we've been.
We haven't had a couple, a good year, like you guys keep figuring it out, like you know, you, you should be proud, both of you. Amazing. That's all staff. I want our budget committee to set some good.
Yes.
No, you guys have set some really good parameters, too.
Pat was here to take the credit.
No, you guys have done great.
Just a couple of final things I wanted to point out. The funding determinations that we submitted for North Valley and San Diego earlier this year did clear through the ACCS, which is the organization that recommends to the state board what funding levels to grant for charter schools that are non-classroom-based. And they did recommend full 100% funding for four years for each of those schools.
Oh, great.
I believe they vote on that.
May 8th, 7th?
It's coming up soon. It's usually May or.
That is the recommendation.
That is the recommendation to the state board. So it's, it's kind of.
Few schools got whacked pretty badly, at least preliminarily, as far as they're suggested.
Yeah, sometimes they, they can reduce the recommended funding to like 85% or 70% or.
They're vaguely allowed to say all of it's gone.
Yeah, or recommend only one or two years instead of four. Theoretically, you know, all schools probably ask for five, which is kind of the maximum, but nobody's been getting it these days. Almost nobody's been getting five. I think they, they only do that if, if the school has really strong test scores. I feel like has been the consensus of when they.
It's like the renewal criteria.
But yeah, it's been four, so this is what we were hoping for, so. Obviously, we'll continue to adjust the budget as the May revise comes out. It's coming out in a little, about two or three weeks, mid-May. So we'll have that updated and the June 6th meeting, 5th or 6th, that you all have moved to now, a Friday, will be the public hearings for the LCAP and the budget, and then the meeting to adopt is on June 12th, which is Thursday. And then as always, just some goals and horizon issues. We have renewals coming up in the fall for North Bay and Riverside, so.
Or sooner.
Doing petition budgets for those two charter renewals and then facilities there are kind of, you know, ongoing questions that we can discuss about those. Just, we had discussed last time, obviously, at the strategic planning meeting, you know, what might we do with the Pivot San Diego facility, depending on if the school's enrollment kind of increases to a sustainable level. And then, you know, what about the North Bay facility as well? We've talked about possibilities for changes or potentially moving, depending on what we can sort out here. So I won't get into that too much because that's a little bit more on Jana's side and we'll leave it there for now. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
You know, that SB 740 thing that we got the four years for both schools, she watches that like a hawk. And we sometimes have to make changes mid-year because it looks like we're not going to make it and it's always based on the year prior. So she has to be watching this a year before we even have to be thinking about it and submitting it to make the changes in that current year because it's based on the prior year. It's not even based on the four-year cycle, it's just based on the prior year. So Liz does an excellent job watching that.
And it's something that we want to meet every year, even if it's not a funding determination year.
Yeah, yes, that is true.
So for example, next year, we don't, we don't have any to submit, but we still obviously want to meet all of the requirements. If they were to say, we want to test this in the audit guide, you know, moving forward.
Not only that, the requirements aren't unreasonable, they're good business practices, but. So.